Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our special meeting at Perth East Council this fourth day of April. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please bow your head for a moment of reflection. Thank you. We need a motion to confirm the agenda. Special meeting on April the fourth, moved by Hughes, second by Amanda, all in favor, carried. If you have the curricular interest, you can disclose that now or as we go along in the meeting. We do have a presentation slash training and we have Guy, our integrity commissioner with us tonight. So Guy, welcome to Perth East and the floor is yours.
So thank you very much, your worship and through you, thanks to the members of council for making yourselves available for this special meeting. And also thanks to any members of the public who are watching. I understand that there's a regular council meeting starting at seven, so I will confine myself for that period of time. And probably leave room for questions at the end, but if it's okay with you, your worship, I'm happy to take questions subject to your discretion as we go along as well, whatever works best.
Sure.
I know that there's a slide presentation here and also there's copies, I believe, are available for members of council. So just starting on the sort of the overview slide, which I think is the next slide. I was going to talk about what an integrity commissioner does, speak briefly about the role of council members as it relates to what an integrity commissioner does. I was going to spend most of the time talking about municipal conflict interest act. And then, you know, the second most amount of time talking about the code of conduct and then finish by talking about the relationship between council members and staff. The first section role of integrity commissioner, we just go to the background slide. I am the new integrity commissioner for the township. And next slide, please, just a quick bit about myself. I'm a lawyer and the area of law I practice in actually relates to conflict interest and ethics. And also, you know, the laws that regulate also lobbying at the provincial and federal level. And I'm, as part of that practice, I'm a municipal integrity commissioner for about twenty or more municipalities across the province. The next slide just talks about what an integrity commissioner does. This is a position that's appointed by by law, by each municipal council, but it's established under municipal act. Every municipality must have an integrity commissioner or make its or arrange to have services of integrity commissioner. And there are four main functions in no particular order. One is the application of the municipalities and members of local boards. The second is the application of the municipal conflict interest act, I'm going to spend more time talking about that. The almost, I think, the most important function is to provide advice to members of councils on a confidential basis about their obligations under the MCIA and the code of conduct. Because when advice is given, you know, hopefully that that can eliminate or reduce the need for there to be actual complaints that people who aren't complied with the code or the municipal conflict interest act. And also a final role of integrity commissioners is to provide education like I'm doing this evening. So integrity commissioners are independent of the municipalities, but we're also officers of municipalities. So I'm an accountability officer of the municipal act, but I'm independent and I'm not an employee of the township. But I also report to the council. So and council appoints me and I basically just make recommendations to council. And final thing is I'm very acutely aware of the fact that this is a one of the responsibilities the province has. It's the fact that while integrity commissioners, as a territory commissioner, I must do a job that legislation by law given must do it completely and fully. I'm also very mindful of the fact that the resources that provide integrity commissioner services come entirely from the municipal tax base and that everything I do has to be efficient and affordable, at the same time as being legally correct and discharging my functions. The the most, one of the most important roles, maybe the most important role, because advice at the front end can avoid problems later on. The legislation says that integrity commissioners can give advice in response to requests that a councillor makes about that councillor's own compliance. So, you know, their responsibilities. So if councillor says, I decided it was on the agenda, do I have curricular interest? I know I can answer that. The legislation doesn't provide for a councillor to ask a question about something else and say, well, you know, this item on the agenda, does councillor so and so have an interest that needs to be declared? I can, the way the scheme of the legislation works, I'm there to provide advice confidentially to individual members about their responsibility. Now, the law says, municipal act says, the request and the answer have to be in writing. And this is because the legislature, I think, or, you know, wanted there to be a record. So there's no dispute about what was asked and what was given, if it's needed later in another proceeding. But I'm very practical about this. I know that most inquiries come before council meetings or before committee meetings when something's on the agenda, so we get some agenda package. So methods I often will proceed under. You can also email me, I'll give you a reply. But if it's really time sensitive, you can phone me and I'll give a quick answer by phone. And then if you confirm in writing, I'll also follow up in writing. So we've complied with the municipal act obligation to document everything in writing, but I give the sense of the answer orally if possible. The next slide just talks about the, one more slide, please. Yep, and one more, please, sorry, I've been going talking ahead of my slides, I apologize. My fault. The written advice that I provide to a member of council is confidential with very few exceptions. It belongs to the member, so the member doesn't have to keep it confidential. If you get advice from the integrity commissioner, you can keep it to yourself or you can, you know, talk about it at the council meeting or table it. It really depends on what a council member thinks the need is. I would say by and large, most council members I give advice to just keep it to themselves, but some of them have actually tabled my written advice at a meeting. You know, for example, if somebody is, has got advice that it's okay to take part in a discussion and they want the municipality, the rate pairs to know that, they might say it at a council meeting. Or on the other hand, if they want to explain why they can't take part, they might, you know, present that or table that. But you don't, you don't have to. It's entirely up to you. Now, from my perspective as an integrity commissioner, the law is very clear. I can't disclose the advice I give to you except in very narrow circumstances. One is if the council member consents, obviously I can do that. If a council member makes public only a portion of the advice that was given, the integrity commissioner can give all of it, make it public. So there's an accurate public record. And then if there is a formal proceeding or under the municipal conflict of interest act, the integrity commissioner is permitted to make reference in variety of ways to the fact that there was previously advice sought and an answer given. The next slide deals with inquiries and that's the, that's the other big thing an integrity commissioner does. Inquiry is just another word for an investigation and integrity commissioners investigate allegations that the code of conduct was contravened and investigate allegations that there's been a breach of the municipal conflict of interest act. This is a, this is a right that people have, you know, anybody can make a complaint that the code of conduct was contravened. And anybody who is an elector or even somebody who's not an elector acting in the public interest can allege that the MCIA was contravened. Whether to actually investigate lies in the discretion of the integrity commissioner. That's based on the assessment of whether the complaint contains enough in it which suggests that even if everything was alleged happened the way it's alleged to have happened, there was, there's something there that would have breached the code or breached the MCIA. Another reason that there might not be an inquiry is whether, is where, excuse me, where the subject matter is something dealt with by another law. For example, if it's about disclosure of, you know, or request for information, that might be more properly dealt with under MPF of the municipal free of information protection privacy act, or if there's a something related to another law or process that might be more appropriately dealt with there. The next slide is my own little, just one more, please. My own little table, not table, my own little graphic or organization chart where I lay out the process. And it's largely the same, like few differences. The process for a complaint alleging that the code of conduct was contravened and a complaint or an application alleging that the MCIA was contravened. Now, they both start with an allegation, a complaint. Now, under the township's code of conduct, a complaint under the code actually goes to the township and then it's rerouted to the integrity commissioner. And the municipal act, sorry, that just lays out something slightly different for allegations under the MCIA, they should go to the integrity commissioner. But in either case, what I will do is I will, I will look at the, I'll look at the document I get and I will determine, does it need to be clarified? Is there, is it not clear sometimes? Maybe about a third of the time, I will go back to the person submitted and say, could you please, you know, clarify? It's not entirely clear. And then I, then I will do one of two things. I will either decide to commence an inquiry and I'll send the person who is responding to the allegations and I'll send the person who's making the allegations a notice saying, yeah, the integrity commissioner, I'm going to conduct an inquiry. And here are the issues in the inquiry, here's what's alleged, here's what I'm looking at. And sometimes there are maybe three or four or five issues and it might be that only two or three of them are grounds for an investigation. So I'll say, you know, these are the two or three issues that the investigation will be about. And these are the other allegations or issues that were raised, but they're not issues that there'll be an inquiry about. And that goes to, that goes to the parties and then the party have a chance to, to address them. So if, to be clear, if a complaint or an allegation is made against you and I'm going to conduct an inquiry, you're going to get a copy of that and you'll see, you know, what the allegations are, you'll have a chance to respond in writing and then the person who made the allegations will have a chance to reply to that. It's also possible, and it happens sometimes, that there is no basis in the materials for an inquiry or an investigation. It may be that what is alleged doesn't fall under the code of conduct of the MCIA, something like that. And in that case, I will send a document to both the council member and the person who made the allegations. And I'll say, this is what we received and here's why, either under the MCIA or under the code of conduct, there won't be an inquiry. And I'll lay that out for the parties. When there is an inquiry, I proceeded in a manner which is fair and balanced. Every, every, both parties get a chance to have their say, to make their submissions. I'll also gather evidence. Many, sometimes the evidence involves interviewing witnesses and people or other times, it's just all a matter of looking at documents. Because in this day and age, so much of what is, it happens is either documented or it's on emails or it's, you know, in recorded meetings. So it really depends on the nature of the case, but you gather evidence and allow the parties to make submissions. Here is where the process then diverges. Where the complaint is under the code of conduct, all I will do is ultimately make a report to the council. And the report will contain findings, either that the code of conduct was breached or that in my view, the code of conduct was not breached. And then if the code of conduct was breached, it's up to the council to decide what to do. Under the municipal act, the council has two types of penalties that it can impose. We can do nothing, it doesn't have to do anything, but if it chooses to do something, it can suspend the pay of a council member who's breached the code of conduct for anywhere up to ninety days, zero days to ninety days of pay. Or it can issue a reprimand, which is simply a formal statement of disapproval of what happened. In addition to that, the courts have said that have recognized, the divisional court has recognized, councils can do more. They can take other steps and some councils may remove somebody from a committee or they may do other, other things. But the courts have said that these additional measures that councils take in response to code contravention can't have their intention, can't have as their intention punishing what went wrong. The court said under the municipal act, to punish or to penalize the penalty for a breach of the code can either be a suspension of pay of up to ninety days or a reprimand and that's it. Anything else that is punitive can't be done. However, if the intention is to, is remedial, is to correct a situation, to remedy something that's happened, courts have said that councils have a wide range of dealing with things. So just to use it, just as a hypothetical example, you might say, well, what does that mean exactly? It all comes down to what the purpose of a measure is. I just mentioned like removing somebody as chair of a committee, that's something other municipalities do from time to time. If the purpose of the removal is to remedy a situation, for example, maybe the issue was a harassment type issue and maybe the, you know, the removal from the chair will mean that a council member is less in contact with a staff member who may have been harassed. A divisional court would say, well, that is remedial measure is something that council can do to remedy the effects of the contravention. On the other hand, if the purpose was simply to punish as a penalty, the individual court has said that that's not appropriate. Anyway, these are not integrity commissioner decisions, these are decisions made by council. Integrity commissioner, under the code of conduct, my job stops at delivering a report to council which says that the code was contravened or it was not contravened. And these reports are public reports, they're considered in public session. Under the MCIA, where the allegation involves municipal conflict of interest act, the council will get the report, but the council is not the ultimate recipient of the report. The legislature has decided to, a different process for municipal conflict of interest act contraventions there. The decision made by the integrity commissioner is whether there's a case to take to court. And if a case is to be taken to court, the integrity commissioner, as an integrity commissioner of the township, will take the case to court directly. So, so in that case, the integrity commissioner is being, is determining, yes, I have considered these allegations, I've investigated them. I think there is a case to take to court and therefore I will take this case to superior court for a formal finding by the court that there was a contravention of the act. Or the integrity commissioner will, determination will be no at the end of an inquiry. I do not believe there's a case to take to court that there's been a contravention of the act. That is not a, that decision, one way or the other, is under the legislation. It's not a recommendation to council, it's just a decision, a determination of the integrity commissioner. And council will of course get a copy of this and the act says that the integrity commissioner's reasons for going to court or choosing not to go to court must be published by the integrity commissioners, that they're made public. But that is not a council, there'd be actually a few cases where councils have said to integrity, at least one in Elliott Lake, council said to the integrity commissioner, we don't want you to go to court. We don't think it's worth it or we don't want it to happen. And to which the integrity commissioner said, well, that's the way the legislation works is it's integrity commissioner gets to take it forward. Now, if the integrity commissioner says there won't be a, there won't be, the integrity commissioner is not going to go to court, the person who made the allegation originally still has the right to do so. And that's also provided legislation. Sorry to spend so much time on this little part. The next slide is something that usually you find at the end of a presentation, but because I've just finished talking about the role of integrity commissioner, I want to stress that I'm always available to council members to answer questions, to give advice, which is part of the statutory role. I'm providing there my contact information, it's my cellphone number, also a toll free number. Now, the toll free number goes to my law office, so you get receptions, you get to ask for me by name. And there's also, I use a dedicated email address for integrity commissioner work, it always goes to me, you can reach me. The final thing I wanted to say, your worship, just on this point about advice, is that my service standard is that if a member tells me when the meeting is, like if it's for a meeting and most times I get called after the agenda package comes out and councillors are reading it, I will endeavor to reply before the meeting. It might be the day before the meeting, sometimes it was really complicated or the notice is really short, it might be like a couple of hours before the meeting, but I will meet that. On the other hand, if council members, you know, if it's not specific to a meeting, it usually is, you know, we can work out a longer timeframe to reply, but that's, that's how I approach that. And I just, what I do ask is that as a council member, should you approach advice, let me know, you know, if it is in fact related to a meeting, when the, when the meeting is. And I'm used to the, and I'm used to the fact that often I'll get contacted on Friday from Monday evening meeting. And that's, that's why, that's just, I understand that that's, that's the service that needs to be provided. I was going to spend a bit of time, the next section is the role of council members. I'm not, in the interest of time, I'm just going to jump over these slides and go right to the slide that says councillors as public figures. So one of the questions, there's a code of conduct, is what is this covered? Does it cover what's intended? And it's obviously important to know that council members are, you know, they're important figure, they're representatives of the township and the community and they're, you're high profile. But as I interpret your code of conduct, the code of conduct has to relate to something a council member is doing that can affect the township or that's in township business. I've in fact highlighted this, these words from the code of conduct, your own code of conduct, which says that this code, you know, sets standards of behavior. And I've highlighted, in the performance of our responsibilities as elected community representative. So it has that some connection to the township for the code of conduct to apply. The next slide just gives two examples of cases that I've been involved in, these are all public cases. The first case involved one of the mayors of Orangeville, I guess it goes back two many years ago. There was another mayor up, the mayor up until twenty eighteen. There was another mayor from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty, there's another mayor now. And the issue in that case involved social media postings of the mayor. I think Facebook was what the mayor was using. The question was, well, it's a personal Facebook account, so does the code of conduct for Orangeville apply to what the mayor of Orangeville says on Facebook? And in that case, you'll see, I wrote there that, you know, in this case, if there were public statements made about town of a Orangeville business, so the municipal business, and they made a public forum, it doesn't matter that, you know, personal social media. If an elected official uses any platform to comment on municipal business and things that are officially happening in the municipality, I said, yes, the code of conduct applies. The second case that I've, the decision I've exited from, it came to a different conclusion, but it was a very different issue. So this was the case involving the municipality of Clarendon, which is just in Durham region, far east of city of Toronto. And there, there was a dispute, this is all documented in the public report, between two neighbors. And the dispute involved, essentially involved things happening on the property line and the fence on the property line and plants growing on the property line. And there's a dispute between neighbors and one of the neighbors was a council member, one of the neighbors wasn't. A complaint was made about how the neighbor who was a council member conducted herself. And in that case, I came to the conclusion that because nothing that was alleged actually related to the municipality, didn't affect municipality, didn't affect municipal business, didn't have anything to do with that. The code was never meant to apply to private conduct by a council member, just because person having a council member. And I just use this as, these examples, I think they're good boundaries. If it relates to, would affect the township, then you should act like the code of conduct, you know, would apply. If it's entirely personal and private and doesn't really relate to the township, then by your own words, the code of conduct was not meant to, meant to apply. The next slide, now the next section deals with the municipal conflict interest act. And I know, go to the next slide, please, that members have, you know, a lot of council training talks about this, so I don't want to be repetitive, but I want to take you through some of the, some recent cases as well. So first of all, despite the name, you know, conflict of interest act, the legislation doesn't cover every conflict of interest. It covers only certain kinds. And there are really two sort of limitations on the municipal conflict interest act. The first is that the interests that are involved have to be economic or financial or monetary or measurable in money or affecting something that is a financial or economic interest, like the value of a house or money in your pocket or a salary or something like that. So non-monetary, non-curricular interests are not covered by the conflict of interest act, this legislation. The second is that only a narrow range of relationships to these economic or financial interests are covered by the act. Specifically, the interests of oneself, so self, one spouse, so self, spouse, parent or child, and doesn't distinguish between adult child and minor child. That's it. Now, it also includes the employers of any of those individuals, companies owned by any of those individuals, organizations or bodies that we can know those individuals as a member. But, but it, you know, other than that, right, so self, spouse, parent, child, and then employers of them and organizations of which they belong and companies they own and companies are, corporations on whose boards they sit. Other than that, code doesn't apply. Sorry, the, sorry, the code, the municipal conflict interest act doesn't apply. Now, that's not the legislature making a decision that everything else is okay. It's simply the legislature making a decision that, you know, here are the boundaries that this law will cover. This legislature is not saying it's okay to vote on a contract for your first cousin or it's okay to vote on a contract for your brother or sister or your grandchild or grandparent. It's the legislature simply saying, our law does not extend that far. So there's still an issue of, you know, personal ethics and personal judgment, right, in, you know, not voting on a contract for your sibling. But the law itself, municipal conflict interest act only covers those boundaries, those relationships. And obviously the interest must be financial or curricular. The next slide, or the next two slides, actually, just talk about, and again, I'll go quickly because I think members are aware of this, things one must do, things one must not do when there is a curricular interest of self, spouse, parent, child and employers of same and organizations that any of those are members of. First is disclosure, declaration, declaration. Before the matter is considered by councillor committee, there must be the statement that one has a curricular interest and a description of the nature of it. And also, it's on the next slide, it must be documented in writing too. Once that interest is disclosed, the member cannot take part in any deliberation, decision-making, voting. So it's not just not voting, you can't talk, but you have to be there. And in addition to that, can't either before the meeting, during the meeting, afterward, try to influence the decision of the other council members who have not recused themselves, who don't have the interest, you can't, you can't influence them. If the meeting is closed, it's very clear, you must not be present for the closed meeting. If the meeting is open, you don't have to leave the meeting, but it is customary in most municipalities to leave one seat and sometimes to leave the room. And why, I say, why, why do you have to leave the room? Well, or why do you have to leave your seat? Well, it says you can't try to influence it and you can't take part. And, you know, by body language, looking at eyes, facial expressions and things like that, it is, it is safer and easier not to influence, not to be seen if you're not actually at your place at the council table when that discussion takes place. The next slide covers off the written submission, which I've talked about. It also adds a new requirement, this is added in the, MS that took effect in twenty nineteen. And though, this means that in addition to not influencing your colleagues on council, if you have curricular interest, you can influence the staff. Now, so much as you know of municipal business is staff reports and recommendations and then council makes decisions based on staff reports, either to accept or amend or not accept the staff recommendations. And so because there's such an important role of staff, if you've got a curricular interest, you can't try to influence what the staff put in their reports or what they recommend. And you certainly, if a staff has a delegated decision-making power, like to purchase something or that, you also can't try to influence the staff exercising their delegated responsibilities. And finally, if one is, misses the meetings or is absent from a meeting where one would have declared a conflict, there's an obligation in the next meeting that one's present, for which one's present to declare that. There are, the next slide starts talking about exceptions, there are eleven exceptions in the act. And these are situations where one does have an interest. So it's not like you don't, I think sometimes people will say, well, you know, if I, if these exemptions apply, I don't have a curricular interest. No, the act doesn't say that. What the act says is, in these eleven situations, you do have a curricular interest, you just don't need to disclose it and you just don't need to pull back from decision-making and voting because of the nature of it. Examples for, examples are where the issue is a municipal decision or a service, about a service or a benefit or something that affects every township. Well, you know, every council is in township, so you can't have Well, you know, every council is in township, so you can't have every council not take part on that basis because it affects everybody equally. There are a few other exceptions, you know, filling a seat, you know, appointing a committee chair, for example, or filling a vacancy. These are, these are decisions that councillors don't have to recuse themselves from or declare interest. The next slide talks about council remuneration. You can vote on that, even if you definitely have pecuniary interest, council remuneration, but that's an exception. So it's an exception for volunteer firefighters, compensation for those who are volunteer firefighters. If you've got an interest in common electors generally, I talked about that. And then there is a, an exception which says that if the interest is so remote or insignificant that no reasonable person would think it's likely to influence you, that's also an exception. That's a, that's a real exception, it's really in the statute, judges have applied it a lot. The only comment I make about that is that you can get advice from the integrity commissioner on that. The integrity commissioner can tell you what I think of that. But ultimately, the only person who can for sure, you know, certain tell you whether or not your interest is so remote or insignificant that it can't reasonably be as likely to influence you is a judge. And that's a judge hearing a case where you're alleged to have breached the act, which is kind of late in the day to find that out. So my caution, and I think most people approach this way, is when you're in doubt about whether you've got it, your interest is remote or insignificant, I err on the side of assuming that it's not because the only person who can, who can for sure tell you that is a judge and by then it's too late because there'll be a case where the judge will be breached the act. So err on the side of caution. From the next slide, just repeats what I just said in the first part. Only a judge can impose the penalties for breaching the municipal conflict interest act. An integrity commissioner can conduct an investigation and take a case to court, but even when the integrity commissioner takes the case to court, a judge decides that. I will also mention that this, this role of integrity commissioners is new, new for the last four years. So previously, under the law, the only way for somebody to bring an allegation that a member had, contrary to the MCI, was to go to court personally. So an individual person, and it had to be an electorate under the old rules, had to go to court, pay court fees, get a lawyer if necessary and go there and make the case itself. And that was subject to a, that certainly limited the amount of litigation over municipal conflict interest act because it was a sort of, you know, burden for people to do that. But it was subject to criticism. You know, the criticism went along this way, like if the law of Ontario is that council members must conduct themselves this way, municipal conflict interest is provincial law, it's in the public interest that that law be enforced. And some people argued it was odd and almost inconsistent with the rule of law to say that the only way for this Ontario law to be enforced was private enforcement by a person individually going to court. Whereas other laws, Highway Traffic Act, right, Lickers License Act, they're actually, they're actually enforced by the state, by the province, right, by, by law enforcement authorities. You don't, right, if somebody's speeding, you know, I don't have to stop the person. That's done by, by authorities. So, so there was a, there was a call and a number of circles to say, well, shouldn't there be, you know, a public aspect, not a private aspect to enforcement of the MCI? So the legislature came in and that's where they, that's where they put the integrity commissioner in that position. The integrity commissioner is now the potential public enforcer of the act. As in the process I described, the integrity commissioner will receive the allegation, investigate the allegation and then decide what the integrity commissioner wants to go forward to court at municipal expense. So there's the public funding of the, of the enforcement. But the legislature left in place the old regime too. Meaning that you don't have to go to the integrity commissioner, you can on your own, go to court, pay the filing fee, get a lawyer and all that and privately seek enforcement of the MCI. And in addition, even if you go to the integrity commissioner route and the integrity commissioner turns you down and says there's no case to take to court, you still have the right to go to court yourself. So that's the, that's the change there. The next slide just lists penalties. Four years ago, the legislature expanded the, the list of penalties. It used to be the only thing a judge could do was to vacate your seat and prevent you from running again. Now that's still a sanction, a possible sanction, but there's a range of outcomes. There could be a reprimand, there could be a suspension of case. And judges have more flexibility to tailor the outcome to what they see the facts, the situation are. Next slide, you know, confirms the importance of seeking advice from the integrity commissioner. A judge isn't bound by what the integrity commissioner advises you. A judge doesn't have to agree with the integrity commissioner, but a judge can take into account whether you went to the integrity commissioner and whether you in good faith followed the integrity commissioner's advice. The judge can take that into account in deciding on a penalty if you, in fact, have breached the act. So I want to, I see 23 minutes, I'll leave room for questions. I wanted to, and I'll flip through because there's a record here, your worship slide, just a few cases, not many, a few cases which talk about how the law has been enforced. And the first case is the, just go to the next slide please. The first case is one of the most recent cases. It's a, it's a case in Elliott Lake where in fact Elliott Lake lost its mayor. Its, its mayor was a council member, elected as mayor in October of 2022. But then his seat was vacated because of something the individual had done while a council member. In this case, the issue was a potential municipal redevelopment. You may recall, it was a large news, it was a public inquiry in fact, years ago about a snow build-up on a shopping plaza having the roof fall in. Anyway, for a long time Elliott Lake has been talking about what to do about that part of the city. And one of the proposals has been to create a community recreation complex. Now, not necessarily in that location, that's where the Conflict of Interest Act issue came. The city's been looking at various locations. I think that the state still hasn't decided on the actual location. So the individual, Mr. Patry, who was the subject of this complaint, with his spouse, with his wife, were co-owners of a, of a strip mall. And that strip mall was near one of the proposed contemplated locations for the new community recreation complex. And the, what the court found was that the council member, both in meetings and outside meetings, privately in discussions with staff and with other councillors, had been doing two things, doing things to, you know, make the case for putting the community recreation complex near the strip mall. And also doing things to diminish or disparage or convince people not to favour some of the other locations that were farther away. And the court, the court didn't just, you know, do this based on instinct. The court actually considered expert advice on property and business valuation, where a business valuator talked about the impact to the strip mall and its tenants and its owners of having the recreation centre close by versus having a recreation centre in another part of Elliott Lake. So the judge found that there was a breach of the act, that the councillor had taken part, had failed to disclose a pecuniary interest in the contemplated location of the community recreation centre, had improperly participated in decision-making, both in meetings, outside meetings and, and vacated the seat. And also banned the individual from running for municipal office for another two years, which is, which, that struck me as a bit curious given that there's a four-year cycle, as you know, for municipal elections, so a two-year ban really doesn't prevent you, unless it's a by-election or something, from doing much, you can still run in the next cycle. But anyway, that's, that's the most recent. The next case, I will mention this one as well. This is a case that was upheld, a decision upheld on appeal. Here, a council member took the position that she really wasn't talking about her son. But the court found that she, she was indirectly doing what she couldn't do directly. So as I, I expect the township does too, the, the, the United Townships of Brudinell, Lindock and Raglin have a fire ban and they have a policy that if there's a fire, which is set contrary to the bylaw, the fire department will come and put it out and send an invoice, send a bill. That's, I think that's fairly common in much of Ontario. And the councillor had a son who in fact had received a bill from the fire department for putting out a fire which had been, you know, set contrary to the, to the fire ban. Now, the councillor had never intervened in that case directly. But when the fire chief and fire department were up before council on a budgetary matter, the councillor took the opportunity to cross-examine basically the fire chief on how they deal with fire bans generally, how they invoice generally, what their process is, what they do with the money and all of that. And the, the court was satisfied that this was close enough to being about her son's case to really be about her son's case. And determined that, that the councillor did have a pecuniary interest in these general discussions of fire bans and invoicing for putting out fires and how they use the money and what they did and how fair they were in their treatment. That really, did involve pecuniary interest of her son. And the court found she contradicted the act, removed her from office and that that decision removal was upheld on appeal. I am going to skip the next case, which is Elliott Lake versus Pearce. It's on your records in the interest of time. I am going to talk about the Duncan and Hewitt case. Not everything that councillor, council decides affects a pecuniary interest. And the courts, there's several cases, I'm not going to talk about all of them, but there's, there's a theme here in these decisions. The courts have said that where all councillors talking about is a study or sending staff off to come up with recommendations. And we don't know what the study is going to say or we don't know what the staff recommendations are going to say. There is not necessarily a pecuniary interest in the motion to send the staff off or to commission, you know, a study. So the example here involved, I think this was Haldeman, where there was a, a, I think it was a windmill or a mill. There was a historic or heritage property and there was a local community organisation which was, you know, trying to preserve or save this heritage building. It was a private, well, a municipal property, a private, private building. And the, the not-for-profit group came to council at one meeting and said basically, we're going to throw in the towel, we can't do anymore. And the motion before council was to have staff report back on what to do, what the implications are, what would mean for this not-for-profit community group to give up and try to save the mill. And a council member whose parent was actually running the not-for-profit group voted on that motion. And there was a complaint to court saying, well, it was a violation of the act. How can you be voting on us, asking the staff to look into what to do with the mill? Now this not-for-profit group is expanding when your, you know, your father, his father is running it. And the court said, no. The courts noted that when the only decision is to ask the staff to investigate, inquire and come back with recommendations, there is no impact on the pecuniary interest of the father who runs the not-for-profit group. And maybe when the staff comes back with recommendations, they'll say like, hey, you know, we should give $5,000 to this not-for-profit group so they can continue their efforts to, to preserve the mill. But that's hypothetical and speculative, right? You're not, and you're not voting, when you, when you vote on a motion to ask the staff to report and come back, you're not voting, you're not voting on, you know, giving money to the not-for-profit, you're not voting on anything, you don't know what staff recommendations are going to be. And this is just, there are a few other examples in here, which I won't take you through your worship or through your members of council. This is an example that, so when there is not a decision that will impact, you know, pecuniary interest, there's simply a decision to throw something to a future process that may come back with a result, then there's no need to declare an interest at that time. Would be if what comes back will affect pecuniary interest. Just on that point, I didn't have, have, I don't have it in this presentation, your worship, but because this is only recent cases, like the last decade, so there's, okay. But there's a case from the eighties or seventies that notes, for example, that receiving for information, like, you know, courts are receiving correspondence, receiving information from correspondence. The vote on a motion to receive for information does nothing to affect a pecuniary interest because receiving for information doesn't enrich anybody, doesn't affect value of property. So, you know, there's no pecuniary, there's a case on that, that nature. It's only where there's actually the decision of council will affect or could reasonably seem to affect pecuniary interest, is there, is there a need to disclose. The next case is similar, it's the York and Harris case. This involved, as happens often in municipalities, municipalities may vote on motions, municipal councils, you know, asking Queen's Park or asking the House of Commons to do something. Well, a motion asking the provincial legislature to do something or a motion asking the Parliament of Canada to do something does not have substantive effect. It's just an expression of opinion. And an expression of municipal opinion can't affect a pecuniary interest. Like this particular case involved a councillor whose spouse was working for a labour union that would benefit from a particular change to provincial labour law. And it is proved that the spouse would have under the legislation a pecuniary interest in what the legislature did, if it actually did it. But as the court pointed out, municipal councillors don't decide what the legislature does. And municipal council vote, asking, suggesting, recommending, urging Queen's Park to do something, doesn't affect, doesn't, doesn't do anything other than state an opinion. And that statement of opinion doesn't affect pecuniary interest. I will skip the next slide, I'll skip the Cooper case, that's about, it's somewhere we've talked about. I'll skip the Rivette and Brer case. I will, yeah, I'll skip all the MCI cases in the interest of time, your worship. And quickly, in the time that rains, just talk about the code of conduct. I'll simply, I'll skip the first slide. I will say that the heart of the code of conduct are sections four, five and six. Those are the sections of the code that identify standards of conduct, which are actually statements of principle and that contain rules of conduct. And I've listed them here. And if I go to slide 38, which says structure of the code, I will note that some provisions of the code, while very important, well extremely important as matters of principle and objective and they reflect the determination of the council that enacted this bylaw, the things that would happen, are really things that, you know, are beyond the purview of an integrity commissioner. Just an example, I just look at, seek to achieve a team approach, an environment of trust at the middle of the slide or the bottom, take reasonable care and exercise due diligence, advance the common good. These are, the council, previous council in enacting this bylaw, you know, thought these were important enough and they are important enough, statements and principles to elevate. That doesn't mean however, that everything that's on this page can be an integrity commissioner complaint. I don't, my position is that unless, unless you tell me otherwise, which you can, you don't want the integrity commissioner coming in and determining whether, how you voted advances the common good or whether, you know, how you conduct yourselves and exercise due diligence. So I see these statements of principle very important as messages to councillors as to how to conduct themselves, not necessarily things that you want an integrity commissioner, second guessing what it meant to, to, to advance the common good. However, I'm going to start the next slides, there are some very specific and clear rules of the code which integrity commissioner could enforce if there was a complaint. I'll just, I won't go into detail, there's confidentiality, closed session rules and personal information, anything that comes to your plans. There's a gift and benefit provision, I'll talk about it in a second. There's misusing, not using township property, resources, staff time, anything for proper township purposes. There's a section which deals with communicating council decisions, also dealing with the news media. There are, in the next slide, very important provisions reflecting, respecting how you deal with staff roles. I'm going to return to those, how you treat one another as council members. Building on the section which talks about not using or improperly using township resources, there's a specific section about not properly using township resources in the context of election campaigns. And there's a very important section which prohibits abuse and bullying and intimidation and harassment. The next slide, I said, come back to gifts for a second. The basic rule is that if an entity, and that's not the word in the statute, that's my The basic rule is that if an entity, and that's not the word of the statute, that's my word, the statute, the bylaw, the code talks about an individual or a profit-making or not-for-profit organization or associations, basically any entity. If an entity has business dealing with the township, a member can't accept or ask for any gift or benefit or entertainment from that entity. And in addition, shouldn't, can't put, the member can't put oneself, remember, can't have any benefit from that entity or from a contract. There are some exceptions, they're laid out in the next slide. They included a business meal, but it's going to be two criteria. It has to be necessary for completion of a task, like you're having a meeting over lunch hour, and it would be impractically or socially awkward for the member to pay for the meal separately. So not either one of those, but both of those. If it's practical and not socially awkward for the member to pay separately, you've got to pay separately. So that is what it requires. Promotional items are allowed if under $75 in value, just an example here of what's allowed. There is also, the next slide, a disclosure statement, which must be filed with the clerk within 30 days. And then finally, really quickly, just talking about council staff relations. Council staff relations, I'm going to go to slide 46. They're dealt with in the policy, the council's senior staff roles and responsibilities policy. They're also largely dealt with in the code of conduct. So it's the code of conduct, all these sections you're looking at are in section 5.6 of the code of conduct, not directing the staff directly, respecting the professionalism of the staff, respecting the fact that their role is to make recommendations, not injuring their reputation or being malicious, not criticizing them publicly. The next slide, not improperly influencing them in their duties or functions, treating them appropriately, not abusing them, not bullying them. Then skipping the next slide, the policy itself then also talks about respecting the distinction, right, between the council, which sets policy and makes, enacts the bylaws, and the administration, staff leads the administration, which actually implements the decisions and operates, there's a distinction, right, council decides, the staff implements. And the policy also acknowledges or recognizes that there's a reporting relationship, right? The C A O is employed by the council, and everybody else beneath the C A O is counted as the C A O. So C A O is the primary channel through which council should be giving its direction. If there's criticism of staff, policy says it should be directed through the C A O through administration, and it should not be done in the media or in public. Want to spend just a second on one aspect of not interfering in staff duties? And that's by law enforcement, next slide, please. So law enforcement, and this is true, is true of the R C M P and the O P P as it is of a municipal bylaw official. We recognize in Canada that the jobs they do, while they're ultimately accountable in a macro sense, big picture, right, to civilian authority, in a case-by-case basis, no law enforcement official, like I said, from the R C M P right down to municipal bylaw, can be subject to political direction or interference in determining whether to lay a charge or not to lay a charge. That is a, it's almost, it's a constitutional principle, it flows in the rule of law, that our law enforcement is to be protected from political interference. And so when the code says non-interference in staff and the execution of their duties, it includes non-interference in bylaw enforcement. A council collectively makes the bylaws that get enforced, council sets the budgets, council can set priorities, and, you know, and council can, in a non-case-specific way, can talk to the C A O and ask, you know, we have problems generally with noise. We have problems generally with fireworks. But on a case-by-case basis, you know, that firework at that property at that time, that is something that council members cannot comment or involve with. Skip last slide, I'll just make, I'll just go to the very last slide. And I'll simply point out that there's a, you know, healthy relation between the staff and the council. As I said, staff typically make the recommendations, council boils on them. Council doesn't, a council member doesn't need to determine what the staff recommends because ultimately councillors have the right to vote for a recommendation or report, move an amendment to a recommendation or report, vote against a recommendation or report, or move that the consideration of the recommendation or report be tabled to defer. Right? So all of those, and a councillor is free to do any of those. And that's up to a majority of council, whether council agrees to adopt or amend or defer or reject. But councillors are free to do that, and they don't need to therefore dictate what the staff recommends. Staff recommend what's in their best professional judgment. At the same time, staff are professionals, and they recognize that they've given their best advice. And it's not a personal sled on the staff if council chooses a different direction. But council members, correspondingly, can't personalize it. They can disagree with the recommendation, they can vote against, as I said, amend, defer, right? They can't make personal their disagreement with the policy recommendation and channel it toward the person. So that's the distinction, right? You can disagree, but you can't be disrespectful. You can vote against a recommendation or vote for it or amend it, whatever, but that you don't have to take part in making the recommendations. And ultimately, council does have the ultimate authority to set the direction for the township. And that's appropriate. What's not appropriate is acting in a way that is personally demeaning or bullying or intimidating or harassing. I, you know, that's generally understood, but that's the sort of the scheme of, or that's the the structure of the balances between the two rules, which are both extremely important. I realize, your worship, that maybe I've talked so long, I haven't left much room for questions. And I apologize for that.
That's okay, you're very informative. Are there any questions, quick questions, Jerry?
So thanks, guys. Number, slide 20, number seven, has that one always been in there? Declaring conflict at the next meeting, if you're not in attendance.
Yeah, that was, that was there prior to the 2019 amendments, yes. I don't remember, I don't remember how long it's been there through your worship, but it's been, that's not a new one.
Okay, thank you.
Amanda?
Just a comment and question. I, when you started your presentation, I kept looking at you, and I thought, this guy looks so familiar. And I just, you were Stephen Harper's Chief of Staff, correct? I was an intern in Ottawa a handful of years ago during the Harper years, so good to see you. And my question is, just sort of piqued my interest with the one case you were talking about with the spouse that worked for the union. And just really curious on that one, because that would not, that would be considered, you know, in my view, and again, obviously, the, I'm just for discussion, really is you're using your position of power as a councillor to lobby another level of government. And so essentially, that was not deemed as a conflict of interest, is that correct?
So, yeah, so I'll answer questions, reverse, I want to talk about also your first one. The, that's not a, so it's simply not covered by the Municipal Conflict Interest Act. It's not, but as a matter of personal ethics, and as a matter of what one thinks is appropriate, obviously, you know, one could use judgment and not advance things that are in the interest of a spouse. It's simply, because, it simply was technically not covered by the M C I A because ultimately what the council was, councillor was advocating was just a statement of the, it was actually the regional municipality Waterloo. So it was ultimately a statement of Waterloo region's opinion, which did not therefore tangibly affect the spouse. But you're right, I mean, that's why I said urgently, one can still, as a matter of personal ethics and conduct, decide not to use one's office as a councillor in that situation. If I might just, your worship, just to clarify, I'm obviously, that is my background, that is what I've done. But I just wanted, for those who are listening as well, to know that since becoming municipal integrity commissioner, I have actually, because it's important that everybody in every municipality have confidence in what I do, I have stepped back from partisan politics, and I have not been involved in federal or provincial partisan politics or municipal politics since 2016 for that reason. I decided to put that on the record.
Okay, thank you. Any more quick questions? I have one, I will maybe call you, and it's about land, so be in the interest of time, we are at seven o'clock here, so we need to wrap up. But we thank you very much, you know, a lot of information, great information. I'm hoping that no one has to use you. I know that, that doesn't sound the greatest, but we appreciate what you do, and I'm hoping that we all behave and no one gets filed against. So anyway, thank you again for coming tonight, we do really appreciate it, and all the best, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you for having me, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So council, we do have a confirmatory bylaw, and it is at council of the township, oh, sorry. First, we'll do the delegation presentation, council of the township of Perth East received the training presentation from Guy W. Gerono of Fasken Martino de Poulon L L P, role of integrity commissioner, Municipal Conflict of Interest Act and Council Code of Conduct for Information. Moved by Jerry, second by Hugh, all in favor, carried. Now we have bylaw number 14-2023, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the township of Perth East at its special meeting held on April 4, 2023, be read a first, second, and third time. Moved by Amanda, second by Bob, all in favor, carried. And a motion to adjourn our special meeting at 7:03. Moved by Hugh, second by Amanda, all in favor, carried.